Mr. Gary, Mr. Purdon will be ready to begin.
Yes, Vice Chairman Sullivan.
Thank you. The first thing on our agenda this morning is the public hearing. This public hearing held by Louisville Metro Air Pollution Control Board is called the Order, and is being held pursuant to CARAS Chapter 77 and district regulations. Notice in this hearing has been published pursuant to state law. This public hearing is being held via video teleconference. Instructions on making written and oral statements via video teleconference have been distributed. All statements must be presented today. Statements should be concise and limited to three minutes. All statements will become part of the hearing record. There is one agreed board order to be reviewed today. With the staff please present the agreed board order with DuPont Specialty Products USA LLC. Mr. Purdon.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Sullivan, board members. The district breaks for the board's consideration an agreement with DuPont Specialty Products USA LLC, which manufactures vinyl fluoride for the use in other chemical manufacturing. The plant is subject to a district issued Title V operating permit and Strategic Toxic Air Reduction or STAR program. The company's operating permit limits multiple pollutants, including VOCs, hazardous air pollutants, air toxic, uh, toxic air contaminants, and requires monitoring, record keeping, and reporting to demonstrate that air pollution control equipment is being properly operated. The district alleges that DuPont failed to operate their chemical plant as allowed in their Title V permit. On June 7th, 2022, the company submitted a notice of excess emission during upset conditions report notifying the district of a possible emissions event due to observed discrepancies in hydrogen fluoride and vinyl fluoride quantities. On June 21st, 2022, the company submitted a follow-up report to the notice of excess emissions, notifying the district that two valves were leaking hydrogen fluoride and vinyl fluoride to the scrubber from May 4th, 2022 through June 6th, 2022, which resulted in excess emission of 53,378 pounds of vinyl fluoride and 249 pounds of hydrogen fluoride. As required by District Regulation 1.07, Section 4.4.7, 4.7.7, the company conducted a root cause analysis of the event, took corrective actions to resolve the leak, and is implementing additional changes to prevent a similar event from reoccurring. These steps include replacing the valves on an annual basis, developing new specifications for valves in that type of service, and adding additional indicators to the valves to provide field operators with additional in-field verification of valve position. This order was brought before the board in December, but at the request of the public, the comment period was extended through February 1st, 2023, and the public hearing was continued to today's meeting. The district received a series of comments on the order during the public comment period and has prepared written responses to those comments which have been provided to the board. The response to comment document will be posted to the website after this meeting. One comment received suggested a potential conflict of interest due to a board member being retired from the company. The enforcement process at the district does not include the board until the potential agreement has been negotiated with the company. When a potential conflict exists, board members refuse themselves from voting on agreements or actions. Additional comments were recently received by the district after the end of the written comment period. These comments were provided to the board before today's hearing for consideration by board members. The company has agreed to pay a penalty of $7,500 to resolve the notice of violation. The district recommends the board adopt the order as written.
Before we continue, I just want to emphasize, maybe reinforce some comments that Mr. Purdon made, regards to the board role and agreed order, the preparation thereof. The board is not involved. That process is conducted entirely by staff. The board's responsibility is to approve or disapprove, this presented, or, I mean, a read order. In addition, if there's a conflict of interest related to regulatory entity with a board member, that board member chooses himself voting on matters. With that being said, Mr. Gary, as a representative of DuPont, register to make a statement?
No, Vice Chairman Sullivan.
Thank you. Mr. Gary, is any member of the public registered to make an all common?
Yes, we have several. First was Ms. Tina Halbig. Ms. Halbig, if you'd step up to the podium to make your comments, if you're able.
I'm a co-founder of Voice Work Environmental Association. The comments, exceedances of over 57,000 pounds of vinyl fluoride plus 249 pounds of hydrofluoride in violation of Title V, District Regulation 2.16 versus DuPont and Chemours operating permit of 3,019 pounds of volatile organic compound emissions and could have affected the health of nearby residents. Note that about 2,400 people lived within one mile of the plant. This is an environmental justice issue because 62% are people of color and nearly half are low income. These exceedances were over a period of time from May 2022 onward for around one month, and apparently no notice to the public. Thus, there was no way for the public to hold DuPont and Chemours accountable. APCD should take a survey of the residents to inquire of any hospital visits, doctor visits, et cetera, during this time, especially any persons or children or babies who had symptoms of burning skin and eyes, headaches, dizziness, confusion, encoercation, nausea, vomiting, shortness of breath, et cetera, which was documented. DuPont and Chemours should reimburse folks for medical visits. Also, many medical issues related to fluorine and fluorosis could be on this survey. Apparently, there is an APCD ethics issue where the board chairman, Carl Hilton, was assigned, I have a copy of that, where his signature is to go, and he's on the document, where APCD rules of conduct and ethics. And yes, I agree that don't you be refusal. He did work for DuPont for years and retired a few years ago, and that would be deemed a conflict of justice, and he would be unable to be impartial to his former employer, and may still have been from DuPont with retirement benefits and possibly on his stock. So how was the $7,500 fee assessed? It appears minimal. And what will that be used for? Will APCD ask DuPont and Chemours to put a thermal oxidizer in place? Will they purchase more air sensors? There is a lung program. However, it is preferable for DuPont and Chemours to install air sensors at their own cost to detect such leaks. These chemicals are to make fluoropolymers and fluoroc chemicals, which are needed, like PFAS, and the thermal oxidizer can remove 99.9% of PFAS. Are these necessary products, and what are the products? Louisville Water Company does not have daily removal of PFAS. It's only on an absentee basis. U.S. Senator Mitch McConnell's letter, I have a copy here of yesterday, of 2014, says citizens have a vested interest in the quality of the air they breathe, the water they drink, and the natural habitat that surrounds them. I hope you'll read the earlier written comments submitted February 1st, 2023, and look at the effects of the exposure to hydrogen fluoride, and especially the report on hydrogen fluoride, how toxic is toxic? By DuPont, William has the laboratory. He tells that persons with compromised lung function or cardiomyoclonic disease are more susceptible to hydrogen fluoride, in a binding amount like three parts per million, and airborne concentrations during a workday, because even the small amount of irritation and possible systemic effects and ongoing exposure that is fluorosis, I explained that. So I'd like to hand in a copy.
I'll get it out at the meeting from him.
Okay.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Gary.
Yes, next up, Ms. Amelia Smithson.
So I work on the air justice student team at the University of Louisville, and we have a series of questions concerning this fine that I would like to read here. Like Dr. Poole, we are wondering how did APCD arrive at the $7,500 per settlement fee? But more importantly, where are those fees being applied? Next, if the leak happened in May, then why was it not reported or detected until June? Because there were excess emissions, has or will the notification be sent to nearby communities about this increased exposure to the likely carcinogen? Was or will a health impact statement be performed by Louisville Metro to determine the possible effects of this leak on nearby communities? Beyond vinyl fluoride, what other VOCs has DuPont and Chemours regularly emit? On the issue of equipment, how old are DuPont and Chemours scrubbers? How reliable are DuPont scrubbers, or scrubbers in general? As mentioned earlier, it seems as though the leak was happening for weeks before it was detected. Finally, how frequently are DuPont scrubbers checked or inspected by APCD? But above all, we wonder, why did APCD not detect this leak prior to DuPont self-reporting it?
Thank you. Mr. Gary.
Dr. Megan Poole.
Good morning. And thanks to all of APCD for holding space for public comment. It's important to know when companies have not held themselves to the airfall of the standards deemed safe by APCD and the Clean Air Act. It's even more important to hold companies like DuPont accountable when that happens, like we are today. DuPont reported releasing 19 times more vinyl fluoride, a likely carcinogen, than APCD's permits allow them to emit. Is there any way APCD has to confirm those numbers, or do we have to trust DuPont's word for that? And while we're thinking over that statistic, that 57,378 pounds of vinyl fluoride is 19 times more than the allotted 3,019 pounds of VOCs for which DuPont is permitted, how does APCD arrive at the $7,500 in fines? Are there levels of fines established somewhere that we could review? And if so, how are those fines established? Numbers like 19,000 come to mind, $1,000 for every multiple of the allotted amount. Or better yet, 190,000, $10,000 for every multiple of the allotted amount. Those numbers get closer to thinking about how industries might compensate residents who live near this facility, and whose health was no doubt impacted by these excess emissions, like Ms. Halbig stated. But I suppose there's no easy way than calculate the medical bills that may have stemmed from increased hospitalizations or doctor visits due to increased emissions in that timeframe. In the absence of knowing that number, and knowing what compensation and reparations really look like for impacted communities, we can only say this much. $7,500 is not the kind of figure that speaks the whole industry as accountable. On that note, I need you all to hear me on one last thing. Statistically, fines for violating environmental laws vary depending on the racial characteristics of the communities in which the companies are located. That's directly from Yale environmental psychologist Dorsetta Taylor, who uncovers that mean fines are lowest in black census tracts. Further still, Taylor found that penalty amounts decrease as the percentage of black individuals in the census tract increased. As we know, DuPont is located in an area of the city that is populated predominantly with black residents, and by residents who experience poverty, over half, as Halbig said. Put simply, this fine of $7,500 is what it is because of where DuPont is located, which means that this fine is racially and socially unjust. I urge APCD and the board to reconsider. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Gary.
Those are all the speakers that we have registered so far, Vice Chairman Sullivan.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public in the Edison room that wish to make a comment? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing that, move on. Are there any other members of the public that wish to make a brief comment on this teleconference? Please reach your hand via teleconference you call upon.
I see no raised hands, Vice Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Gary, is anyone else wish to speak?
I see no indication, so.
Are there any board members that have any questions?
It's Dr. May. I just wanted, just clarification. The measurements are being taken on a continuous basis, but it's just when it reaches a alarm threshold that it is reported, or what?
So in this event, they noticed that the quantities of the chemicals varied from what they thought they should be, and as soon as they noticed it, they reported it for our regulation that there may be an excess emission event. So that it's not like an alarm was triggered that triggered the report. It was their internal investigation, and when they discovered the discrepancy, they notified us.
And what, and our active measurement is, does occur, or it does not occur?
So I don't.
Oakland Parkway, are we measuring that?
We are not measuring anything on their facility. We have ambient air monitors offsite.
This is not a chemical that is being monitored at our Oakland Parkway air monitoring station.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions from board members?
I have a question concerning the amount of hydrogen fluoride that was, that was, as the board states, 200-something pounds that escaped during the event, normally scrubbed, and in the response to comments, if the efficiency of the scrubber was given 99.9% or better. I wonder, over the year, what would be the emissions of hydrogen fluoride?
So the way this system is set up, this did not vent outside of the scrubber. This vented through the scrubber and was scrubbed.
So the amount of hydrogen fluoride emitted during this two-month, approximately two-month period is about the same amount that would have been anyway?
It was 240 pounds more, because they did not think it would be going. It was still scrubbed, but it was not supposed to be venting to that scrubber at the time. But it was escaping the process, but it's still, you know, vented into a controlled piping system. So.
To the atmosphere or not?
So it wasn't vented to the atmosphere. It was vented into the piping system, but still vents through the scrubber. So it was still 240 pounds more than they would have emitted, because they were not supposed to be going through that part of the piping system at the time, but it is still controlled.
I see. So what has been invented?
I don't have that. I can look into that. I don't have that number in front of me.
Okay. And hydrogen fluoride is a hazardous air pollutant on the list, hazardous air pollutant. Since quite top. What about the toxicity of vinyl fluoride?
That is not on the HABs list, and it's not considered a toxic air contaminant for the STAR program. So we look at that as a volatile organic compound. That's how it's regulated.
I see. Did you look at any reports or data, for example, of the chemical data that you've seen already, health effects, as discussed here?
So we are aware of those, but as far as, you know, regulating and applying penalties for violations, they were not considered.
Okay.
Any other questions from board members?
I missed a raised hand in the public. No, it's my fault. Ms. Arida Gadsden. Ms. Gadsden, I'll make you a panelist. You should be able to unmute you, Ms. Gadsden.
Can you hear me?
We can.
I didn't, I didn't have a lot to say, of course, in listening to all the things that have been said. I think all of these things have been said several times to, in discussion with Air Pollution Control District, and the fines that are levied. I do agree with all of those, that the fine is somewhat low. No, it's not somewhat low, it's too low. But what the other thing is that I also heard, and I also agree with, is that these discussions, I think, need to go further than just the fines that are levied on the companies. And I've said this for years, that there should be a percentage, an automatic percentage, that is put on fines, put on top of fines, that actually go back to the community. It's the community that is affected, it's the community that suffers through this. So along with everything that everyone said, I'm not going to take up a lot of time. I will write or call if I feel like, feel the need, and I probably do, to say some more. But I did want to make sure that I made that official for today.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments, Mr. Gary?
No other raised hands now.
Okay, with that, this public hearing will be adjourned. And I will now call the Director of Meeting, the Louisville Air Pollution Control Board, to order. We will be conducting the Monday board meeting via video teleconference. First, it's called the order recognition of the form. I will conduct a roll call. Board members that are present on this teleconference, when I call your name, please say here. Jeffrey Coburn.
Here.
Josephine May.
Here.
Candace Shrope White.
Here.
Marissa Neal.
Here.
Daniel Garf.
Here.
Thank you. Any introductions, Ms. Hamilton?
Not this morning.
Okay. Any public recommendations, Ms. Hamilton?
Not until our presentation on our 2020 Annual Year in Review.
Later in the meeting.
Correct.
We will the minutes. The minutes of the regular meeting held on January 18, 2023, were distributed electronically for review. Are there any changes to the minutes by board members? Hearing none, those minutes will be approved. Public comment. Mr. Gary, is anyone registered to make a public comment?
No, Vice Chairman Sullivan.
Has it anyone provided written comments?
No, Vice Chairman Sullivan.
Right off. Are there any members of the public in the Edison room that wish to make a statement? If so, please raise your hand. Are there any members of the public that wish to make a brief comment on this teleconference?
I see no raised hands.
Thank you. Oh, I should have told you the instructions for that. I apologize. Mr. Gary, does anyone wish to speak?
I see no indication that anybody wishes to speak.
That completes the public comment portion of the meeting. Ms. Hamilton, is there any unfinished business?
This morning, we had proposed a great board order with DuPont Specialty Products.
All right, the district had recommended the board adopt a agreed order with DuPont Specialty Products USA LLC. Is there a motion to adopt the order?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, I will now take a roll call vote. Please unmute your mic and say yes if you wish to adopt the board order with DuPont, and no if you do not. Jeffrey Coburn.
Yes.
Josephine May.
Yes.
Candace Shrope White.
Yes.
Marissa Neal.
Yes.
Daniel Garf.
Yes.
And I will vote no. The agreed order with DuPont is adopted. New business? There is no new business. Don't believe any of the committees met, or did they?
No, it's our last meeting.
Okay.
We do have a set of regulations that are out for public comment. We had a public hearing on those last Thursday, and there will be a continued public hearing at the March 15th board meeting on that set of regulations.
Thank you. Moving on to staff reports, recommend the.
Thank you very much. Well, good morning, everyone, and thank you all for joining us today. Again, if you need to visit the restrooms, need to go to the third floor and the hallway. So this morning, my director's report is going to focus on EBA's newly proposed National Ambient Air Quality Standard for Particulate Matter. US EPA is taking comment on this proposal until March 28. We want to highlight some specific provisions for those who may be interested in sharing their thoughts on the proposal with US EPA. Byron Gary, APCD's regulatory coordinator, and also the board secretary treasurer, will be joining me in sharing this information. Afterwards, I'll be joined by APCD's management to share our accomplishments from 2022. This information will also be detailed in our APCD 2022 Annual Report, and you'll be able to find that on our website. Before I begin, as you've seen from Sunday's Courier-Journal article, odors, including those from MSD's operations, continue to concern residents near the Morris Foreman Environment Quality Treatment Center and throughout the combined collection system. Representatives from MSD will be attending the March 15th meeting of the Air Pollution Control Board to report on their findings in the technical memorandum, the ongoing patch face and cleanup progress and repair projects, their next steps in implementing the recently completed Odor Control Master Plan, and any other progress in addressing odors that they'd like to share with the board. Are there any questions about that? Hearing none? The district would like to share the following presentation on US EPA's newly proposed particulate matter standard. Mr. Gary?
Thank you, Director Hamilton. Making sure everything's up there. Okay. So as Director Hamilton indicated, EPA has proposed to reconsider the particulate matter NACS. I'm going to give a little bit of a background on the NACS first, and where we are in attainment with the National Ambient Air Quality Standards. NACS is one of the most common abbreviations in an agency full of abbreviations. Stands for National Ambient Air Quality Standards. These are set by US EPA for pollutants that are common to the outdoor air and come from a variety of different sources across the nation. There are six different NACS. EPA is required to review every five years. They're not all reviewed at the same time, they're sort of on a rolling basis. So right now, EPA is reconsidering the PMNACS, but there are five others. There's carbon monoxide, lead, nitrogen dioxide, particulate matter, ozone, and sulfur dioxide. And as you'll see, particulate matter is split into PM10, or coarse particulate matter. Those are the larger grains of particulate matter, and fine particulate matter, or PM2.5. Right now, APCD, or rather Louisville, is in attainment for all of these standards, except for the ozone standard, which we are monitoring attainment for, and has submitted a redesignation request for that we spoke to the board about before. Little bit more about particulate matter. It's a mixture of both solid and liquid particles suspended in the air. They range in size from under 10 micrometers, roughly one-fifth the width of a human hair, all the way down to ultrafine particulate matter, or fine particulate matter, those below 2.5 micrometers, or roughly 1/20th the width of a human hair, so really small, as you can see in the diagram, if you can make that out. And there are a variety of health effects associated with inhalation of particulate matter, ranging from non-fatal heart attacks, respiratory symptoms, all the way up to premature death if long-term exposure is incurred. Currently, there are four different NACS associated with particulate matter. There are primary and secondary annual NACS for fine PM, and as well as a 24-hour standard for both fine particulate matter and a separate fine, a separate 24-hour standard for coarse particulate matter. The one that we struggled with the most in the past is that annual standard of fine particulate matter. As you can see from the chart here, that standard has been lowered from, in 2012, it was lowered to 12 micrograms per cubic meter. And APCD has been in attainment with that standard, however, that's the one that we come the closest typically. It's set at 12 right now. Our current monitor's level is 10.2 micrograms per cubic meter, based on preliminary 2022 data. That standard is currently 12, but the one thing that EPA is proposing to amend is that primary annual PM2.5 standard. They're proposing to amend it down from 12 to somewhere in the range of 9 to 10 micrograms per cubic meter. They're also taking comments on anywhere in a range from 8 all the way up to 11 micrograms per cubic meter. They've proposed to retain the secondary standard, as well as the 24-hour standard for fine particulate matter and the 24-hour standard for coarse particulate matter, although they are taking comments on a range for that 24-hour fine particulate matter standard, all the way down to 25 micrograms per cubic meter. As I indicated, that's not the one that we would struggle with, though. The one that we would struggle with potentially is the 20, or I'm sorry, the annual fine particulate matter standard. As I indicated, we're at 10.2 micrograms per cubic meter right now. That's just outside that range, indicated by the dotted lines on the graph right there. So we would just be outside of that range, whether it's at 10 or at 9 micrograms per. So we would just be outside of that range, whether it's at ten or at nine micrograms per cubic meter. In addition, we're not the only ones. This is a map of all of the areas that based on two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty-one monitoring data will be out of attainment with either nine or ten micrograms per cubic meter. Those dark green areas would fail to meet ten. That includes Jefferson County. The lighter green areas would fail to meet nine micrograms per cubic meter. You can't make out all of them, but it's fifty counties that would fail to meet the ten micrograms per cubic meter. Sixty-two additional counties would not meet the standard of nine micrograms per cubic meter. So that's a lot of counties across the nation. And in addition to each of those, as EPA makes designations, it's not just the counties that fail to monitor it, as you saw with ozone. Louisville is the only county, Jefferson is the only county in Kentucky that that monitored, monitored in excess of the standard for ozone. But they'll often designate adjacent counties if they find that they're contributing to that exceed of the standard. So.
Right here, which they, you're required to monitor, that kind of population size.
Yeah, so I'll get to that in just a minute. Billy, Billy can tell you much more in detail, but there are. Well, I'll get to it in a minute, but yeah, population size is one of the main criteria.
Right.
Just a little bit on the process. EPA has a lengthy review process for these particulate matter standards or any of the NACS standards. They start with an internal review where they prepare several documents that are incredibly lengthy, incredibly detailed, starting with integrated science assessments, followed by a risk and exposure assessment and then a policy assessment. Each of these range from several hundred to several thousand pages long and try to be as comprehensive as they can on the science on the matter. And then the policy assessment being sort of a bridge, assessing that science and how it should impact the standard, where EPA staff makes their recommendations. Each of these documents is reviewed by the Clean Air Scientific Advisory Committee or CASEAC, and EPA puts together a proposal, which then goes to the White House because it's such a significant potential action. It's reviewed by the Office of Management and Budget. And it's been through that process. Right now, there is a proposal out. The next step will be a final decision on that reconsideration. We expect that sometime early two thousand and twenty-four. This is a reconsideration of a final decision in December of two thousand and twenty. It's been ongoing for some time. That process has been going on since June of two thousand and twenty-one when they first announced the reconsideration and January when they proposed it. Once they finalize that reconsideration, assuming that it is a lower standard, assuming an area fails to meet that standard, the next step is designations of areas. That has to happen within two years after the adoption of an updated standard. So we anticipate designation of areas by two thousand and twenty-six. An attainment demonstration for those areas that fail to meet the standard, that is a comprehensive document showing how an area plans to meet the standard is due within a year and a half after that, so roughly two thousand and twenty-eight. And the final attainment deadline wouldn't be until two thousand and thirty-two. So once a designation occurs, this is an extremely long process that will go on for at least a decade from where we are now. A few other things that EPA has considered. One of those is monitoring network and environmental justice. At the bottom bullet points here, you can see are the requirements right now for monitors. For a MSA, there has to be one monitor at the site of expected maximum PM two point five concentration. For metropolitan statistical areas with greater than a million people, there has to be a second year road site. Ours is near Durant Lane, right near the intersection of I sixty-five and I two sixty-four for us. And then for some locations, an additional third monitor is required in an area of poor air quality. And in this rule, EPA would require that to be in an area of expected at-risk communities. That could be lower socioeconomic status, could be lower income, or it could be an area where there are an excess of sources related to fine particulate matter. Currently, we actually have five monitors in Louisville Metro. All of those have a fine particulate component. You can see them overlayed here on a map comparing the percent population of Black African American as a two thousand and twenty census or, I'm sorry, two thousand and eighteen American community survey, but census data nonetheless. And we do have that Algonquin Parkway monitor right in the heart of our largest Black African American population here in Louisville. EPA is also proposing to amend the air quality index. This is the standard that you'll often see out there indicating how air quality is right now. Generally, below fifty is considered good, up to a hundred is considered moderate air quality. And then above that is unhealthy for sensitive groups. Louisville rarely sees above that unhealthy for sensitive groups or orange status. The cutoffs for that would be amended to match the new standard. There are a few other topics that EPA is soliciting comments on, including amendments to the federal reference methods and federal equivalency methods and how some of those are calculated, and seeking comments on whether and how satellite-based instruments and low-cost ground-based air sensors can help meet nonregulatory air quality data needs. Oh, sorry, I didn't realize that had cut off on me.
It just happened.
Just happened. Okay. The final topic that they spoke a lot about, although they haven't proposed anything specific, is wildfires. Wildfires are becoming an increasing concern, particularly when it comes to fine particulate matter standards, as we see global warming continue on pace. With that, I'll hand it off to Ms. Hamilton.
Thank you very much, Byron. So EPA is taking comment on this proposal. You can find it in the federal register, and we have some links at the end of this presentation to guide you there. When EPA comes out with the proposed rule, they have a suite of other documents to assist people with evaluating that rule. In this case, that includes the regulatory impact assessment. For those of you who might need some nighttime reading, it's about four hundred and sixty-seven pages. But for a visual learner like me, it's repeated with great diagrams. So if you're interested, I highly recommend you take a look at that. I'm going to touch on just a few things today. And first off, in that regulatory impact analysis, US EPA has a very detailed cost-benefit analysis of the cost of controls versus the health benefits associated with each of those proposed levels, eight, nine, ten, and eleven. And even one, where they consider that secondary standard at ten and thirty rather than thirty-five micrograms per cubic meter. With respect to that, it's expensive. This is a national program, so it's going to have nationally large numbers. Next slide. I'm highlighting just a few here of those costs and benefits. At a ten microgram per cubic meter level, we could see a hundred, I'm sorry, seventeen hundred avoided premature deaths, a hundred and ten thousand avoided lost workdays, seventeen billion in net benefits, and ninety-five million in costs. At nine, that number for avoided premature deaths nearly triples. We see two hundred and seventy thousand avoided lost workdays, forty-three billion in net benefits, and three hundred and ninety-five million in costs. So for each of the proposed scenarios, you can find that information. But I want to highlight that in that regulatory impact assessment, EPA does a very thorough analysis of the public health benefits, not just avoided morbidity, but an estimate of avoided hospital admissions under each of the scenarios for cardiovascular events and respiratory events, emergency room visits, heart attacks, hospital admissions due to Alzheimer's, hospital admissions due to Parkinson's disease, stroke, lung cancer, hay fever, asthma onset, asthma symptoms, and albuterol use, lost workdays, and minor restricted activity days. So as Byron explained, the early part of EPA's analysis through that Clean Air Science Advisory Council and the experts that US EPA rely on really drive the science behind their proposal. So if you are interested again, that regulatory impact assessment is a wealth of information. Next slide, please. So we've talked about the fact that we're at ten point two micrograms per cubic meter. If the standard were to be adopted tomorrow at ten, we would be in non-attainment on paper. But by the time EPA would designate us, which is about two years after that initial proposal would be finalized, EPA believes that we will be attaining ten micrograms per cubic meter. They also believe that we'll be attaining nine micrograms per cubic meter by that two thousand and thirty-two deadline. And that's because our work is a continuum. We don't get to attainment of a National Ambient Air Quality Standard and dust off our hands and say, great job. Now we can, you know, eat at lunch and talk to each other. Instead, we're continually working both at the national and local level to continue to drive down emissions. And so there's some important projects already underway that have us on the glide path to attainment. And this includes in two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-six, there'll be greenhouse gas emission and CAFE standards for vehicles that will continue to drive down mobile source emissions of particulate matter. We'll likely have a greenhouse gas emission guideline for electric generating utilities. And then, of course, there's the prostate air pollution rule that may apply further reductions if it's finalized. In two thousand and twenty-four, Mill Creek will be shutting down Unit One. For those of you who are familiar with Mill Creek, it consists of four units as part of their billion-dollar improvements to that site in two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen for the mercury or toxics rule. They added on really substantial scrubbers to Units Three and Four. Mill Creek Unit One is being shut down to comply with the Water Act, so we'll see that in the near future. In twenty, I'm sorry, two thousand and twenty-six, we hope to see again that prostate air pollution rule budget reset. In two thousand and twenty-seven, that's the law in your heavy-duty diesel knock standards. We see a lot of particulate matter in that mobile source sector, particularly from diesel vehicles. In two thousand and twenty-seven, we anticipate Mill Creek Unit Two shutting down as well, leaving only Mill Creek Three and Four behind the control units in operation. In two thousand and twenty-eight, because of our air pollution really doesn't abide by jurisdictional boundaries, we will also benefit from some other electric generating utility shutdowns in the near area and retirements of other facilities. One of those is ABD Rockport, which is located in Indiana and is one of the largest upward sources. So with that, next slide for us. My slide didn't. I apologize. There is, if you look at that regulatory impact assessment, an analysis of all the areas that were shown on Byron's map about what sort of estimate EPA was making based on their two thousand and sixteen data they used to analyze the issue, about how much an area might need to reduce its particulate matter emissions in order to meet the various standards. As I've mentioned, at eleven, we're already meeting that standard. At ten and nine, we're on the glide path to attain that standard according to US EPA. But at eight, they anticipate that we would need to have a reduction of five hundred and fifty-two tons of particulate matter to reach that standard in eight by two thousand and thirty-two. So we hope that everyone will take a look at this information. Consider commenting on US EPA's proposals. You can find the information linked here, and they do have some very easy-to-read back sheets. I appreciate Byron including a link for the regulatory impact analysis. They are a wealth of information. And it's generally a place where EPA is more forthcoming with what they're thinking. You'll find that the proposal, the federal registered, first off, is written in about nine-point font, so good luck with that. But it's very regulatory in its language. The RIA is a little bit more reflective. So again, encourage people to take a look at that. You can submit your comments electronically. They also have an email document. If you have questions about accessing this information or providing comments, we're happy to help you get to the right place to submit those, so please reach out to us. And are there any questions?
Well, I have a question concerning cost-benefit calculation. Do you think they understand? I only hope you're totally familiar with how they calculate that. But two issues. One is whereas it's easy to cause, relatively easy to calculate the economic cost say damage to materials damage to problems and pollution. The economic value or cost associated with a death or illness is really difficult and it involves a value judgment.
Very difficult.
That's my one point. Maybe you're aware of whether that's included or not. And then the other thing is that I know recently, several years ago, there was a lot of criticism of EPA's cost-benefit analysis because they included co-benefits. And I wonder if as a result of that criticism, co-benefits meaning reduction in other flukes that occurs. So I wonder if this includes or if this not include.
So I'll take the first one and simply acknowledge you are correct about that, that it is a judgment about the value of life. US EPA uses a variety of models, and they have their own analysts, financial analysts, to do that assessment. It is explained in the RIA, the models and their process for coming up with that value. In this case, unlike the mercury air toxics rule, there is not a discussion of co-benefits for the particulate matter standard directly. The issue with the mercury air toxics rule that drew so much public scrutiny is that it's very expensive to control a little bit of mercury. But when you control for mercury, you also control for sulfur dioxide. And you get a lot of bang for the buck with sulfur dioxide removal, not just as a direct pollutant and one of those criteria pollutants that Byron mentioned, but because it's emission forms particulate matter as a secondary pollutant. So in the mercury air toxics rule, that's what was really driving the cost-benefit analysis there is that it's expensive to control that mercury. We got a whole lot of sulfur dioxide control and co-benefit of reducing particulate matter. And if you look at the air quality of the force, you go back through time. What you'll see here locally is that in two thousand and ten or some two seconds.
Twenty ten.
Twenty ten. All right. So in two thousand and ten, USPA passed a sulfur dioxide National Ambient Air Quality Standard that substantially lowered the standard there and required emission reductions across many sources, including electric generating utilities. In order to meet that mercury rule, they also at the same time needed to meet new sulfur dioxide rules. That's why we saw conversion of clean run to natural gas and why Mill Creek added on those scrubbers. In our air monitoring data for both the improvements at K-Run and also at Mill Creek, you can actually see in sulfur dioxide emissions when they turn those new controls on. And it goes from one hundred and forty-nine parts per billion, which was twice the standard in two thousand and fourteen. I think we're down at nineteen or lower. Lower than that? I think the last time I looked, it was about thirteen, fourteen parts per billion. So we're controlling mercury, but we're getting from one hundred and forty-nine parts per billion of sulfur dioxide now down to fourteen parts per billion of sulfur dioxide. And that is an amazing improvement. You can also see that dip in the particulate matter monitoring that we've done. I failed to mention that there's another source here in Louisville that will be transferring its boiler from coal to natural gas, and that's American Synthetic Rubber Company. We've permitted that project, and we're waiting for that to go online. That will also help reduce particulate matter substantially as we look towards whatever proposal EPA finalizes. Did that help?
Yes. So about the co-benefits in the in two point five. Yes. So about the co-benefits in the EGA 2.5, did it include or not?
I don't recall seeing co-benefits explained, but any time that we're going to control for particulate. And EPA, in the regulatory impact assessment, of course, looks to our largest sources of particulate matter. That is coal combustion typically. So controls for electric generating units or cement kilns, for example, are evaluated as part of the regulatory impact assessment. But particulate matter comes from vehicles. We talked a little bit this morning about those national vehicle standards that EPA has in place that would drive down mobile source emissions. But there are also proposals to evaluate emissions from char boilers, both under-fired and over-fired. So like your McDonald's hamburger versus your Burger King hamburger, both of those are evaluated, as well as construction dust and other types of land development that may drive coastal particulate matter. So there's a suite of things that can be implemented, easy things for some communities, such as watering shoulders of roads that are not raps, as well as putting in place construction management protocols to further drive down that type of emission from large projects. With respect to the co-benefits, Dr. Homer, here in Louisville, when we implemented the mercury air toxins rule, K-Run converted to coal to natural gas, Mill Creek added on the additional controls at that facility, there is a research paper that was done following that, that was combined with a propeller health study that evaluated the drop in asthma inhaler use and hospitalizations here in Louisville, and it showed a direct correlation. So be happy to share. I may have shared that.
I think I've also seen.
Okay.
It's pretty good.
It's very dramatic. But in this case, we expect to meet the standard, whatever that standard is. We intend to meet it. There will be parts of our country, however, that will not meet this new standard. And in fact, there are parts of our country that are struggling to meet the standard from 1997. So some folks have a lot of work.
On P M 10, you said EPA thinks things are on track to meet the new standard.
Yes.
Although in your annual reporting, what like P M 2.5 was trending up the past two years. Was that based on land changes and utilities and things like the power generation?
We believe that we've seen over the past several years an increase in our average from wildfires in the West. That's why that wildfire discussion in the proposal is important to us as well. So again, air pollution doesn't abide by jurisdictional boundaries. It flows across the country and we see it in our monitors. We've also seen a few unusual events in the past two years, including a Sahara dust storm. And then we also see a little bit of impact from our annual Fourth of July celebrations.
Thank you.
So the cross-border budget, can you explain that, relate to comments you just made?
The cross-state air pollution rule?
Yeah.
Come on.
I'm gonna let you.
Okay. So that relates to the 2015 ozone standard. For each NACS that is adopted, states are required to submit an infrastructure shift SIP, part of which is required to cover how they contribute to exceedances in other places. For Kentucky, that is as far away as Connecticut. We have an exceedance at monitors in Connecticut that's ruleable, and Kentucky, as a state, contributes above the threshold that EPA considers contribution, generally one part per billion. So we have more than a one-part-per-billion impact of wind somewhere, somewhere downwind. We have to account for how we can get that at least below that one part per billion. EPA doesn't think we did that, so they passed the cross-state air pollution rule. We are one of a number of states that contribute to that northeast corridor where most of those problems are on the East Coast anyway. And as part of the cross-state air pollution rule, where EPA believes they are taking care of that problem for the states contributing, they adopted NOx budgets for EGUs. So for every EGU within that, I think roughly 17-state area, there is a NOx budget set for each unit, and there's trade program set up. In addition, for the first time for the 2015 standard, EPA has adopted or proposed to adopt, should be finalizing it sometime this year, one way or another, they proposed to adopt standards for NOx on a number of non-electric generating unit types of facilities. That included things like gas pumping stations, large turbines, cement kilns, I can't remember what else. But for the first time, they went beyond just EGUs. And that's significant for P M because NOx, aside from being a precursor for ozone, is also a precursor for P M. And all of those sources that contribute NOx also contribute P M. So by controlling NOx, a lot of those units are going to have to either shut down or take off controls that also help with particulate matter.
When Byron mentioned gas pumping stations, we're not talking about your sit go. We are talking about gas start emission. They're different.
So those interstate transmission lines where they're pumping natural gas from down in Texas to places further up the coast, et cetera?
So Byron's right. There are states that we receive some of their pollution, and then we share some of our pollution with our neighbors. It may go into national conferences uncomfortable, especially if you've ever had breakfast with Tad Abrams in Maryland. We'll let you know just how much he can contribute. It's interesting. But it does allow for the utilities to manage this issue on a fleet-wide basis. And so because of that trading, they may or may not reduce emissions here in Louisville, other than to comply with that agreed order we have with LGD during ozone season. So.
So emissions trading and.
For EGUs, for electric generating.
Yeah. I mean, more commonly owned across the country. Do you have any idea? Do you power?
A is another big one.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll note, it's at the chair's discretion, or vice chair, as it may be. We do have a number of, or at least two raised hands that I saw from the public, but that is at your discretion.
No, let's stay about it.
Okay. Let me stop sharing so that I can see if those hands are still raised. We have one call-in user with a raised hand. I'm going to unmute you, call-in user. I don't have a name or even the digits of your phone number, so I will unmute you. You are free to speak, call-in user.
Sure. It just said I'm unmuted. This is Philip Imber with Louisville Gas and Electric in Kentucky Utilities. I'm pointing everyone, I noticed Rachel did a nice job of explaining a number of federal rule issues that are happening. I suggest people also look at the current Senate Bill 4 here in the state of Kentucky as it relates to reliability and retirement of facilities. Just another variable in the various statute and compliance issues that we're trying to address. And if people want to look at that and comment it to their state legislatures, that would make sense. Thank you.
Thank you. One more?
Whoever it was, just put their hand back down.
Okay. All right. Well, let's move on to the air quality reports, air quality data report, air toxic report.
Chairman.
Yeah.
We have a presentation.
Oh, we do. I'm sorry. How about?
All right. We'll try to be quick. I'm actually going to go to the front of the room here to see that. So good morning. Again, it is a privilege to share with everyone highlights of ABCD's work from 2022. And this morning, I'm joined by an amazing group of professionals who are committed to improving the air quality. That includes Matt King, Communication Specialist, Billy DeWitt, Air Program Monitoring, Air Monitoring Program Manager, Matt King, A.B.C.D. Environmental Engineering Manager and Permitting and Air Pollution Control Officer, Steve Revell, A.B.C.D. Environmental Engineering Manager at the Department of Enforcement, and our other A.B.C.O., Michelle Ping, A.B.C.D.'s Executive Administrator and Director of Land Planning, and Rachel Smith, who manages our administrative team and is unable to join us today. So all have the great pleasure of sharing the phenomenal work of her team when we get to that line.
I think it's Tony Immer. Nice to know anyone. I'm all down.
Excellent.
So our annual report is basically split into a couple parts. You can go to the next slide. We started with some basic information, some recap information, and an air quality update. Then we move on to a section-by-section overview, each section provided detailed, you know, highlights from last year, an overview of what the work their section does, and some look forwards and goals for next year and other years in the near future. I'm going to take us through the air quality update real quick, and it could, it'll be even more brief because Byron and Rachel did a lot of my work for me in the previous presentation. So a couple of factors we use to look at air quality, National Ambient Air Quality Standards are an important one, as Byron noted earlier. That's our attainment board. The only pollutant we are not attainment for is ozone, and we are monitoring attainment for ozone every designation request that's been submitted, and we are awaiting approval on that. So we took an even more detailed look, you can go on to the next slide, at ozone. As you can see, that's our trend line over time. As of 2021, based on data from 2019 to 2021, we met that standard. We still do, based on newer data. That redesignation request is currently in process. If you go onto the next slide, we have particulate matter, P M 2.5. As Byron mentioned in the previous presentation, that's our monitoring data for 2019 to 2021, and those little dotted lines are where that new standard is currently being proposed. So we meet the standard. We look forward to meeting the new standard, doing the work necessary to get there. So directly related to the National Ambient Air Quality Standards, as is also mentioned in the previous presentation, is the Air Quality Index. This is a tool we use to kind of explain how air quality, or what's currently being monitored in the air, is going to affect human health. It's calculated for five of the six NACS pollutants: ozone, particle pollution, sulfur dioxide, nitrogen dioxide, and carbon monoxide. As you can see up there, it's on a scale from 1 to 500, or really 1 to whatever. It's, and those values are sorted into six different categories, ranging from good to hazardous. It's directly related to the NACS, a value of 100 or below generally aligns with meeting the National Ambient Air Quality Standard for that pollutant. And anything above that, unhealthy for sensitive groups at first, then even more unhealthy as it goes on, is aligned with not meeting the National Ambient Air Quality Standard. So we can go on to the next slide. We'll get a brief recap of our year and daily air quality index values. It's a little bit tougher to see the colors in here, but the basics are, we had 233 good days in 2022, 125 moderate days, and seven days that were considered unhealthy for sensitive groups. Now, how we arrive at that failing number is the highest value at the highest monitor in the city, so that's the maximum impact each day. It all takes one pollutant, one monitor. So any questions afterwards, except that, but that's, that's the basics of it. We go on to the next slide. That's even more difficult to see. I assure you, it was, it was way easier to see on my screen at home, or not at home, on my computer. But, man, I wish that was easier to tell. But that's a comparison to some historical years. If you look at 2020, 2022, it's around the same. And then those past years, which, as Byron noted earlier, the great AQI changes as the NACS change, we're looking at those past years with the current AQI, not the past AQI. If you could see in here, I could tell it unhealthy. There's only unhealthy days in those previous years in 2010, 1995, and 1980. There are some unhealthy years. And then there's very unhealthy years in the 1980s. So the trend is, we do not have any more of those unhealthy, very unhealthy years for these more recent years. And we see a significant decrease in unhealthy for sensitive groups days. So we'll share this afterwards, and it will be available online for you to look at that. The next slide has another visualization that kind of shows the last 20 years. This one's a little bit overwhelming, but I like it because you can see a very clear trend. Even in the last 20 years, we've seen a significant decrease in unhealthy for sensitive groups, unhealthy days. We see more green days throughout the year. So past the AQI, we'll touch briefly on air toxics. Yep. So air toxics are basically anything that isn't a criteria air weekly that could be, that is like considered to cause harm to public health or human health. Since the passage of the STAR program in 2005, we've seen a significant decrease in emissions of toxic air contaminants, which are what the STAR program refers to air toxics as. And soon, I won't belabor this because soon we'll have a report on our, excellent work that Billy's team is doing in air toxics monitoring and some of the results we've seen from that. That'll be in a few weeks. So we'll provide that at the board when we have it. But that'll be, that's coming soon, more on air toxics and what is currently in our air. Next slide. It would not be an air quality update of 2022. If we didn't briefly mention that we've seen an unprecedented amount of odor reports. Steve will touch more on this later in the community compliance section, but especially late summer, going into the fall and winter, especially from sewer odor reports, we saw significant uptick. Coincidentally, we also published our odor service request dashboard this year. That's a resource based on some public feedback that they wanted more information on the work we're doing on odors. It visualizes the odor investigations that we complete. It's available on our air quality data page and is updated quarterly. So you can always reach out to me. It's on my website. That's available for the public as well. So now, with that, you can ask questions later, but I'll hand off to Billy to give an update on your monitor.
Hello, Billy. We're Air Monitoring Program Manager. And I have the privilege of working with a great group of folks in their monitoring, and just wanted to pass along a few of the highlights of 2022. We have a very dedicated staff of scientists, and we're lucky that for the first time in 2022, in many years, we're fully staffed. And so I'd like to thank those folks that for years held down the fort. Their dedication and professionalism is unmatched. And because of that, we were able to bring the new folks along very quickly. So before we start and running along some, we also implemented due date review and data analysis procedures for our quality assurance team. QA can be a very daunting process to make data legally defensible. And I'd like to thank the QA team for their work on that, in particular, supervisor of that section, Brian Paris, who spent a lot of time and energy in refining that process. On the instrumentation side, installed an escalometer at a dirt lane or near road site, and that's to measure black carbon moving forward. And that will give us an idea, some idea of speciation of particulate matter, which could be important moving forward as we hover that line of attainment. And we've fully successfully implemented PANS, Auto GC, and Carbon Eos monitoring. And PANS is photochemical assessment monitoring, and these are very technical instruments to monitor for VOCs that are precursors for ozone. We were under regulation to add that to last update of the ozone rule. And we now run gas chromatograph both on Algonquin Parkway and our Cannon's Lane sites. Algonquin Parkway was installed initially to take a look at VOCs in the Rubber Town area in West Louisville. And the one at Cannon's Lane is just a more metro-wide look at the precursors of ozone. But we're monitoring similar chemicals at both sites, kind of get a picture of the idea of maybe a difference in those levels across the county. That's a very quick highlight. There's a lot more, but as I say, more time, I'll move along to the next.
Matt King. I'm in the District's Industrial Permitting Section. Thanks, everybody, for joining us. Industrial Permitting Section completed 84 permit actions in 2022. That included 25 construction permits, five Title V renewals, 10 feet permits, some buyer and registering registrations. We also, in the permitting section, house our mobile We also, in the permitting section, house our mobile modeling employee, and because of our attainment designation requests, he conducted several reviews of transportation emissions and sets what are called mobile emission budgets, and those will be used to judge future transportation projects against. So it's a big year for that part of the section as well. So over the last year, we tried to spread the word about our permitting actions, hopefully inform folks of what we do with our permits, how the limits are set, how we establish the conditions of those permits. And I have not fact-checked this, but I'm pretty sure it's the most permits, the most comments we've ever received in a single year. I think close to 500 permit comments this year. So I think we've succeeded in getting the word out, people are aware of this process, but it does cause a good bit of frustration. Permits are an inside job, they're very jargon-filled and technically advanced. So we're still working to help folks understand what that permit is, what it does, what's the basis of that permit. We're pretty happy that folks are at least aware of this at a higher level past. We're trying to demystify the permitting process, much easier said than done. Folks have noticed our public notices now include a FAQ section, it's an attempt to explain what the permit's about, give folks an idea of their level of interest to dig in deeper, lengthy materials we provide, try to let folks know if it's brand-new construction or maybe some replacement equipment or renewal of a permit, emissions, and give clients histories in there. But it really, again, is something that's not easy to follow, and we're not sure we're hitting on all the marks, but if we can keep working on it, folks will see the benefit of this public involvement in permitting. Certainly want to inform folks about actionable comments, you may have seen that in some of our other presentations. And I think a part that can be tricky is, most of the comments we hear are actionable from an air pollution policy sense, but they may not be actionable in a permit. We're not setting the rules when we write a permit, we're reflecting those rules in that document. So on top of trying to help folks understand permits and the role permits play, try to inform folks on where other opportunities are to make those comments. And like you'll see shortly, we will provide the board with our response to comments, sometimes noting their impact to a permit or lack thereof, but to give the board an idea of what we're hearing through these permit processes, we give that to agency leadership as well. So even when comments don't directly affect a permit, they do get into the system, they are taken into consideration. You'll see some progress on that in the future. Just want to thank the permitting staff, we've got a great team, we've got some 30-year veterans, we've got some folks who've been on the job about a year, so it's a good mix of folks. It'll work well to understand what these facilities do, what they emit, how they emit it, and try to comprehensively include all those requirements in the permit that's, you know, not only useful for our enforcement team, but also for the general public to have an idea of what's on the table.
Hello, I'm Steve Revett, I'm the Compliance and Enforcement Manager. For the industrial compliance section, I kind of like to highlight two groups that we, you know, programs that we don't normally talk about here. We talk about the big chemical plants and electric facilities, but we also have the asbestos and stage two, stage one gas need dispensing operations, and both of those are staffed, two staff members that have had over 30 years of experience each. Last year, the asbestos program issued 428 asbestos permits, reviewed 121 wrecking permits, and performed over 200 inspections. Regina Freeman, who has been with Metro for 33 years, was involved with most of those permits and inspection. She also trains new staff to assist with the asbestos program and is an active union member, having served multiple roles on the union executive board. ABCD also permits over 350 gas dispensing operations, everything from large gas stations down to small tanks for golf carts. Over the last five years, this program has been the sole responsibility of Robert Lobion, who's been with Metro for 37 years and is familiar with every gas station in town, who owns them, what equipment they use, what maintenance company they use, how much they charge in the convenience store, and what ones have the best topic. Last year, he worked to get 93 of the permits renewed and performed over 150 inspections at gas stations. The rest of the team also inspected Title V sources, referred things to enforcement, did our normal day-to-day work, but I kind of wanted to highlight the suit for their years of service and how much they just handle those programs for us. With Byron. Also talk about community compliance. So as Matt Mudd mentioned, last year was an incredibly busy year. The city experienced a drought in the fourth quarter of 2022 and resulted in the combined sewer system drying out and causing a major odor issue. You live in a part of the city that is on the combined sewer system, this should not be news to you. Our team worked with MSD to spread information to callers and report back to MSD on places that were getting blow reports than others. Once the weather cooled down, we started receiving regular rainfall reports, and these orders subsided. We'll continue to work with MSD on being a little more proactive in the future and tightening fire levels. So for the enforcement section. So the big development we have, we kind of do the daily day work. We've been trying to run a plan to help the community compliance officers, especially during periods where they're busy with motors, sending warning letters out to people that are less cooperative on open burns. This year, we ran into situations where residents did not speak English and sought the use of translation services to get things in other languages. And as our city becomes more diverse, we're going to continue using that because it has been a thing. Thank you.
All right. Hello, everybody. I'm Michelle King, I'm the Director of Program Planning and Executive Administrator in the district. I want to say a little bit about what program planning is because the name doesn't convey it quite as well as permitting, compliance, and monitoring, you know? There's a little bit more into the interpretation. So our team is a dynamic team, and we have a really wide range of work, and that includes everything from regulation development, public information, outreach, and I'm hoping that some of you are fairly familiar with our work because it's really geared toward those public-facing programs and community engagement. From longstanding programs like CARE, Community Ambient Air Education, and the Lawn Care for Cleaner Air program, to new ideas like the Air Quality Action Partners and our expanded social media presence, our team constantly has an eye to new ways to create partnerships within our community and to share the work of the entire district with our stakeholders. To do this, our team works collaboratively with colleagues across the district, across metro government, and with partners at state and federal agencies, and of course, with our local community organizations and schools. So these are just a few of the highlights from 2022, which one of the favorite things about clearing the annual report is looking back and realizing just how much happened in the last year, it kind of sneaks up on you. So we had our second national recognition for one of our programs, and this time it was the Air Quality Action Partners Program. The Association of Air Pollution Control Agencies recognizes best practices from their member agencies, and this is the second time we received that award, the first being for clearing the air workshop series. And to my knowledge, we're the only organization to ever receive this award as well, certainly the only local, maybe in other states, but that one. We're really proud of those awards, of course, but really most proud of the programs and the emission reductions and increased awareness of the work of the district that those bring. We also created a community lawn care equipment grant program, and that comes out of our Lawn Care for Cleaner Air. In this past year, we awarded two grant packages. We awarded one to the inaugural award to the Waterfront for Cannibal Gardens, and the second award in the summer to the West End School. We're really excited about having established that program, and we are working right now to announce our third award, and that should be coming sometime in the next month, month and a half. So look for that good news as well. We've also, as I said, developed a new information platform, and Facebook may not sound like a new idea to most folks, but it is something that the district had an eye on for several years, and we were really excited with the addition of Matt Mudd as our communications specialist in the previous year that we were able to launch that in 2022. I hope if you all are on to the Facebook platform, you're all following us, you get daily air quality forecasts, all of our public notice information goes out there, lots of other events, and then whenever we can get our staff to share pictures and stories from their work, we like to share that out there, too. Sometimes it's hard to get pictures of folks who are just diligently reviewing reports, but Matt Mudd's always calling for this. Our team, as you can see, we get out in the field quite often, so we have more photo opportunities, although you'll note I did give that action shot of Ben, our data analysis coordinator, busy at work mapping some of our permitted facilities. So that's also an action shot. And then, you know, those events photos also really reflect one of the best things about 2022, and that's that we were all able to get out a little bit more, and we were really excited to get back into the community, not get to community events and sharing the work of the district, and hope to do much better in 2023. So a lot more in that report, but I'll let Rachel, no, let's say Ken.
Thank you very much. So I'm around the staff here with our administration section. Next slide, please. When you call ABCD or walk in our door, first person that you'll see or hear is generally someone on our administrative staff. In short, these folks help us manage our payroll, implement our human resource policies, fund fees if they are due, purchase our equipment and supplies, keep our vehicle fleet moving, hire and onboard new employees, help us work safely, and use new IT and audiovisual equipment, including our app this morning. And I do apologize, hopefully at next month's meeting, there'll be a new TV monitor.
Supposed to be later today, actually.
That will help improve the visual in the room here, and without our admin staff, this would not happen. They support the work at the Air Pollution Control Board, including preparing the minutes, documents, the reports, getting us set up for you to have an opportunity to do your work. They also manage a vast library of documents, including samples from regulated entities, managing our physical and electronic files, and ensuring that the ABCD meets its commitment under the Open Records Act in fulfilling open records requests. All of this gets done by a team led by Rachel Smith that includes Donna Anthony, Monica Little, Kevin Festa, Andy Burton, and Sherry Steiner. Individually, these are outstanding metro employees who regularly garner praise from their metro peers and other stakeholders for their professionalism, responsiveness and commitment to customer service and quality. For us, they simply help us do our work in an amazingly seamless way. I know that my ABCD colleagues join me in sharing my gratitude for their commitment and service to the agency. With that, are there any questions?
Just thank you for all the hard work for everybody. An excellent report. It's been a good year. If you have questions or comments.
I would agree with you, and a great report, love all the visuals.
Okay, so now we'll go to the air quality report, and we'll talk before, must I mess up again?
Sorry.
These reports, there's several of them, they were distributed electronically. Say about any questions? Okay, hearing that, I will now adjourn district meeting of the board, and thank you for your participation. Our next board meeting will be Wednesday, March 15 at 10 a.m. Thank you.